To each standard?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the copies that you have there are just the standards.
Okay. This is not the curriculum. These are the standards, like the checklist.
The standards is what you're going to learn. The curriculum is how you're going to get there.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
To the key shifts that we've seen in English Language Arts or ELA. Obviously, we're going to be focusing on forming things, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. But we're trying to shift the focus as well. For example, in the past, we focused a lot on literary texts or fictional texts versus informational or nonfiction. Now, we're looking at trying to even that out and going with a 50/50. And at the same time, pushing our kids out of their comfort zone by making them read more complex texts, adding, again, adding more rigor to their day-to-day curriculum. We'll also be working with them on writing connections off of what they read, substantiating what it is that they think by being able to cite to different sources from what they've read. And instead of doing those, as my English teacher would probably get mad at me, those boring sentence structures, trying to label adjective, adverb, verb throughout the sentence, we're looking at everything in an entire context with embedded grammar. Well, what I think is most important is looking at the shifts five and six and how the students are adding more to the conversations about the text and using academic vocabulary. My youngest son started kindergarten with Common Core and has not known anything else but Common Core. And you can see a difference in his vocabulary and that of my third grader. Their language is just slightly different. You can hear my second grader say, "Well, I think because of X, Y, and Z," or "I predict something," whereas I haven't seen that in my third grader, who I think just started with Common Core this year until much more recently, when we were going over inferences just a couple of weeks ago. And he was saying, "Well, oh, I realize I predicted that wrong. It should be this." And adding those sentence stems to the kids is adding so much more rigor to them through these key shifts.
Key shifts and Common Core, College and Career Readiness Standards and Mathematics. Focus on coherence. K through five standards provide a solid foundation in the fundamentals of math. Students need to have a number sense and a confidence to become critical math thinkers. We've learned with our current curriculum that we haven't addressed this. And Common Core curriculum aims to correct that and develop mathematical thinkers. We have key topics in all grade levels, K through 12, to continue the progress at each grade level through high school within mathematics. Balance of concepts and skills is an important part of College and Career Readiness Standards. We want the student to understand that content standards require both conceptual understanding as well as procedural fluency. Learning how to critically take information and form an opinion is an important part of what College and Career Readiness Standards will do for our students. To do this, concepts are interwoven instead of being taught in isolation. Clustered or integrated standards provide practice in applying mathematical ways of thinking towards the real-world issues, which is obviously a way of providing relevancy. Metacognition is described by Mary Webster as an awareness or analysis of one's own learning or thinking process. We want students to develop metacognition to know what to do when they don't know what to do. This will foster a reasoning and a sense-making in math as well as other areas of education.
College and Career Ready standards are good for students. Coming from Garden City, we're a very transient school district. By providing consistency throughout the state and then hopefully through the different states that have also adopted this, the students are going to know what their high expectations are no matter where it is that they go. There are clear standards which lead to more self-directed learning. At one of our schools in Garden City, they've even provided information for parents to be working and helping guide that self-directed learning. For example, my third grader is now taking tests at home, but at a fourth grade level. So it's differentiating, showing them that he has those higher expectations, and the teachers are able to accommodate his needs. Other kids in his class are taking grade level or maybe slightly lower, again, to accommodate those and push them to those higher levels. Since there are fewer standards for teachers to work with, while we're not dumbing down things, we're being able to allow the students to learn more about those specific items so they can be truly college and career-ready. Just as they're good for students, they're good for teachers. In Garden City, we use professional learning communities, or PLCs, so that teachers can collaborate together to come up with better ideas on how to teach and how to make the curriculum work and go along with deeper thinking. So far, what we've seen with No Child Left Behind is we have 10 minutes for this, five minutes for this, 10 minutes for this. By going to College and Career Ready standards, we're going to be able to allow for more deeper thinking and more time to focus on some of those issues. I've never heard a teacher say, "I need less time to teach." Teachers are needing more time to be able to delve deeper into those things so the kids are able to get the appropriate learning that they need, which makes a teacher's job a lot easier in giving them the freedom to do what it is that they need to do, teach our children.
How will we address these shifts? The same way Common Core addresses learning, by building and increasing rigor, by applying relevancy to mean more to the student, and by improving the relationships with teachers, peers, and hopefully parents. We want to make a connection between reading and writing. We are going to interweave conceptual concepts and avoid teaching in isolation, provide real-world problem-solving. Again, what do I do when I don't know what to do? We're going to challenge students to justify answers, take a position on an issue, debate, annotate, and teach them to think to a deeper level. Career pathways and academies is a subject all to its own, but for the purpose of this discussion, an academy or a career pathway is a very good way of adding relevancy and relationships to a student's academic progress. For example, a student who happens to be on a culinary arts pathway is very much likely going to appreciate learning math based on the measurements of ingredients than they would be toward another way of learning math in a different type of setting. Assessments will change. Assessments will become more difficult as the rigor and relevancy change as well. Performance assessments, as well as performance assessments, if we raise the bar, we need to be able to show strides towards more efficient and effective learning. We need to know what students, sorry, does not see if students know what to do when they don't know. Emphasis on thinking and problem-solving. Next-generation assessments will be looking for personal student growth, like Life Learners. Currently, there are two next-generation assessments that meet the needs of students' progress towards college and career readiness. Smarter Balanced and PARK are the two assessments that currently meet these guidelines. We are prepared in Garden City to start assessing our students in the 2014-15 school year with the Smarter Balanced assessments.
In times of change, learners inherit the earth while the learned find themselves beautifully equipped to deal with a world that no longer exists. It's our time to make some changes, and the College and Career Ready standards will allow us to make those standards, or make those changes.
Questions? We've got a lot of work to do, you guys.
We need to raise that bar.
Whoa!
Yeah, that's, I mean, but that's what I wanted tonight, just to get it by the chance.
That is a good question, I'm trying to say, same way you want to say. Time-wise, we have a lot of time, we will discuss this, so it's hard to know exactly how much time you took. But I think if Saturday stays at five to 10, we're going to be glued on that close to within 45 minutes. One of the things we really need to clarify is, since this presentation was developed, it looks like that the KSP is going to recommend, we learned this a week or two ago, that KSP is recommending the State Board. Before our presentation, we will know what assessment will be adopted. It's been recommended that Kansas State Board of Education adopt Smarter Balanced assessments. And so we'll see how that plays out, but you will know that before the presentation.
What's the plan before this started, and Kansas is aligned with Smarter Balanced? I think we already know that. Don't we?
There was a question as to what they were going to let them go with, though, as far as some of the HCT products and things like that. PARK was never really in the board game.
Okay. And I'm not going to bring up PARK, and I'm not going to do that. I'm just going to say that we, should I say, we plan to use Smarter Balanced, or?
I think you'll know the State Board's decision before your presentation.
Okay.
I think that decision is being made this week.
There is a choice in high school.
Unless it's a table.
Okay. I think it's important that the audience knows that there are assessments to go along with these standards.
And, I want to drag on. Other states have looked at alternative, in other words, some choices when you get to high school, as opposed to sticking with the same approach all the way through all the school career. I've always liked the idea of options for assessment. If one child maybe doesn't perform well in one assessment, you still want data, and you want a perspective, whether it's the test, the way they take tests, or how they think. So diversity of options, sort of back over here to give the classroom and the teacher more data. I want to be sure we always have that.
It looks like third grade through eighth grade, the recommendation will be Smarter Balanced.
And I think it'd be nice to have some of these so that people can see the standards, anchor standards and such, not one for every, you know, maybe one for each row.
Sure, we can set it up.
Just so that people have, keep their arms around what it is we're talking about, these standards. And did you want to hand out? Did you want to?
Yeah, just, it's just apropos to put in, I think, a quick slide on who the folks were in Kansas that were involved in putting, you know, the classrooms in administrative perspective.
Okay, well, as a slide, or can I have?
Well, I mean, if you're not going to put on that handout, then we refer to it, but put it as a quick slide as a follow-up at the end of that slide.
Can I make a suggestion in the misconceptions one? I think it's Slide 22. There's, the standards recognize that both content and skills are important. It has four different bullet points, and you can barely see it when it's up on the screen. And Mark's basically just reading it. I mean, he's ad-libbing a little bit, but there's a lot of it that he's just reading. So I'm wondering.
It's elaborating.
Today it was ad-libbing, so I was ad-libbing. What I'm wondering is if maybe we take out the, for example, and take out those two bullet points, because like what I did on one of my slides, I mean, this is what the six basic shifts in ELA look like originally, and we took out this third column, and that's kind of a little bit of what I used in talking. So if we, if you still said those bullets, three and four, then I think you'll engage the audience a little bit more because they're not reading it on the screen as you're going along.
Right. And it's not so busy, and so then the points are clear and.
And you'll sound really smart.
I did want to also mention on the assessments part that you were talking about, I mean, I think that if we have the appropriate and meaningful type of assessments that you're looking to have with this, that that one slide where we have a disconnect in the belief of high school teachers and college teachers as to the preparedness of students, that will be a much closer number because we will be better able to find those things out earlier. We have a big disconnect there, and hopefully this will reduce that or eliminate that. Because apparently the assessments we have currently are not telling us that information because we do think that we're preparing them appropriately, but it's not transitioning to the next level, so.
Good. Thanks, Jean.
Anything else? Thank you, everybody. I'll line it up for the same meeting. Your address.
I should, we, 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 I, we decided to get ready to go by December 7. We are scheduled to do two presentations on December 7. One, two, right in the afternoon.
Certainly, based on the presentation we first planned to do at the end of night, probably be prepared for other misconceptions, we don't have one on the slide. There's a lot of conversation out there, and there's misinformation, and so that easily could come up in our presentation groups. But I think we're pretty well-prepared to respond to any problems that come up.
And, but, why would I mention on that other slide, maybe on first misconception, I don't have the numbers on here, we can take out the second bullet and just speak to that rather than have it in there, because that one's kind of busy also. Where it just dynamizes, right? And that could be spoken to.
Now, will this presentation be made available to the folks that are coming in the door? You have figured out the PowerPoint, figured out if you're sure it's been developed and it will be, as a result of this, and the standards will be dispersed in our bit like the area. One of the things, I'm wondering whether we could post it on our website and simply put a web reference for more information, because we're going to dummy down some of these slides just to some specific bullet points and then speak to the data. It might be, you know, kind of notes for a PowerPoint. It might be good to be sure that that's available somewhere else.
So you want the whole PowerPoint available, but that's not the one you're going to hand out?
Yeah. The thinking was, what we're now converting into speaking notes, you know, a lot of times that can be available.
Renee told us last week that prompt aware.
Prompt, yeah, prompt aware.
Prompt aware, it's kind of like a teleprompter you put on your iPad as an app, and then as you're going through, if you have to look down, you can see your notes start to scroll through.
Of course, it's like a teleprompter. You just type all your script in there, and anytime you want to stop it, you just tap your screen and it stops. But I used it the night that I presented for you all, and I really liked it because I didn't have to have a paper in my hand, and I wasn't looking down constantly, but it just keeps on going, so.
Yeah. It's pretty cool.
Yes?
Anything else?
Thanks, Renee.
We'll move on to the Board of Education Policy ING, animal clients at school.
You know, I had a request from a board member, as you know, to recall this policy with consideration from the consent agenda to just have some discussion. We've had this policy in the past, and this is just some revisions to that policy, pretty minor revisions. And as you know, the policies, the KSP is recommending during the way with a lot of the regulations. Sorry, my voice is low.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Don't start over. I was just.
Okay. And so these policies are, they eliminate a lot of the regulations, but this policy really is pretty doggone close to what we had in the past, there's just a few minor adjustments. But with that said, I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Any questions on the policy that need clarifying? We will be taking action on the policy.
I guess my only thought is that, you know, plants are good for, good for people. I mean, they give up oxygen. We have schools that plant a tree that have the kids go water. You know, my love for plants came because of a teacher brought in a bowl of flowers and talked about the beauty of them, and it takes time to smell the roses. I think plants are important for kids to see. I mean, everywhere you go, you see plants, in businesses, in offices, in schools. And if there's a problem with the classroom having too many plants, then we should address those types of problems versus saying, no classroom, no room in our school district can have a plant unless they get permission from the principal. I just, I don't understand that, and I guess I don't agree with it, so. I asked for it to be taken off the consent agenda, and my feeling is to vote no on this policy.
The purpose of the policy is not to reduce the number of plants that we have in the classroom, but the policy, in its former form as well as the proposed form, has always asked for, that to be permissioned, granted by the teacher. The purpose, or permission granted by the principal, I'm sorry. The purpose for having the policy primarily is because some plants are toxic. They are dangerous to kids. They're dangerous to teachers. And no one wants to see a plant to be harmful to a student or, more and more kids are coming to us, and more and more teachers are coming to us with allergies. And so this plan, this policy allows for us to monitor and have a safe environment, but at the same time, is promoting plants in the classroom. I don't think there's any desire to reduce the number of plants in the classroom, particularly when I walk in classrooms, I see lots of plants, so. But it's to really deal with that incident that may arise, or that need for us to accommodate a student that has an allergy to a specific plant, or something like that.
Well, I think you, I think you still have that, I mean, if the teacher goes and asks the principal, can I bring this plant in to get you out, and then you have a reaction in the classroom where a kid has an allergy to that plant, you know, getting the permission from the principal isn't going to prevent the kid's allergy from acting up. I mean, at that point, we would address and say, you know, little Tim over there has hay fever, and you're going to have to remove your plant. You know, if there's a history of us having toxic plants in our school districts, then I guess I'd like, I'd like to see that report. I just think plants are good for kids and schools and buildings and, you know, I understand you, I understand the means for it, I just don't agree with it, I guess, obviously. You know, does that make sense? That?
I, to my knowledge, we, and maybe you have more information than I do, but to my knowledge, we haven't had any problems with this policy as it was written before, and this isn't changing that at all. And I'm agreeing with you, I think plants are important, but.
So we currently have, if the teacher wants to bring in a plant, they have to give permission from the principal? About that?
Well, I think that kind of goes along with almost any business. I mean, if my secretary wanted to come in and bring something for her desk that I thought was inappropriate, you know, maybe too big of a plant or something, or, you know, or anything, I, as the employer, would be able to say, no, you need to remove that. And in this particular case, if it does create an allergic reaction without allowing that in there, and without giving, having the principal have control over that, the principal doesn't have control to tell the teacher, you have to remove it, and then we're going to have to be jumping through a lot of different hoops with regard to, well, could the principal actually say that? If not, do we have to go through all of the different steps that we have to go through between the principal? Was the action appropriate? They can appeal that to, I believe, next in line is Dr. Atha, and then after Dr. Atha, we have the other committee, and if they, you know, and then we go back to the school board. If we don't put this in the principal's hands, and it just seems like this is something that the building should be able to control, the principal, it's their building essentially at this point. We've given, we've tasked the principals with providing a safe environment and providing an appropriate environment for educating our children, I think they should be the ones to make this determination. And if we remove that from this particular policy, then I can just see, you know, hopefully it wouldn't come to this, but, you know, there's always one person who's going to test it, that we end up having to go clear through an entire hearing on, with the school board, about whether or not the principal acted appropriately, asking a teacher to remove a plant. So I think giving the principal that ability in this policy is appropriate.
Any other comments?
It was my understanding that that policy was recommended by KSP, that it's more of a statewide policy, so while I don't think we've experienced any particular difficulty with plants in our classrooms, apparently that did come up somewhere, which is why it rose to that level for them. And they recommended that maybe we be more proactive and establish some guidelines, you know, one way or another. I would like to also see, continue to see, you know, plants in the classroom and children exposed to them. I think, you know, we're an agricultural area, so we kind of forget we also have indoor plants that are of interest for children. So I think it's a good teaching tool, and I think the policy will allow for us to do that, but it may be a better way, as Laura was mentioning.
Any other question?
I'm dying to say something, but I'm going to hold my tongue.
Was it a motion?
No, it's just a difference between plants and animals, but.
I move that we adopt Policy ING, animal and plants in the school as proposed.
Second. Any further discussion? Proved in favor, put your hand. Opposed? Motion carried.
Just, just for your information, there, in your, in your policy that you approved in reference to animals and service dogs, and that's worth taking a line with a lot of federal standards, there will be guidelines forthcoming you consider in reference to service dogs. Those are being developed as we speak at KSP, and I will present those to you as soon as I receive them.
Well, that will distinguish between service dogs, therapy animals, and comfort dogs.
They'll, they'll provide guidelines to who they are being in buildings, and how they're handled, and how they're approved, and those types of things. And it may differentiate between those different types of dogs.
Is there such a thing as therapy bullets and comfort plans? I'm sorry.
They're not legal.
That fall, that fall is under insect.
All right. New, new policies.
All right. You have six more policies, and Joanne, we're, after these six, we've got about five or six more.
We may get a new path change.
So we're closing in on catching up unless we fall behind again. But these six that are before you, like where you looked those over, some of them are just simply, one of them in particular, nepotism, is just simply a catalog change as a way of here in the board policy handbook. But very minor changes, most of them worthy changes, and, but I stand ready and willing to listen to any objections you may have of these policies, or how we can correct them to adapt them to the way that you want them to read as a board. a board.
Question for you, Dr. On the nepotism policy, did I hear you right saying that that was called something different or no?
Just as a catalog, it's the letters, G-A-C-C-A, and they were something different. That are older policy, and I know, I think we listed that before.
I got it. I was thinking it was the old other name.
It's still called nepotism.
Oh, that's what my question was.
It's a catalog.
What was the other name, is what I wanted to know.
Any other questions or discussions about these policies? Okay, we'll take action on it at the next meeting.
I have a quick question. On board committees, it just says in the current language, that board members, and it says friends, shall not slash may serve on committees which advise the board.
That's what we would probably recommend to you, that you go with may, because you have committees that board members participate on, such as the calendar committee.
That's not, it's in parents, so, but it's not underlined and it's not struck through.
It's a, it's an option. KSP's saying, choose one or the other there in the final version of the policy, so, but we bring you a final version next time, we will have shall not or may in there. And generally speaking, we always go with may because that leaves you latitude, leaves us latitude.
That's why I wasn't understanding why we even had shall not, and they were coming to date with may or shall not. But you're saying that's a choice for the board to make at the time of the adoption.
Right. And we'll, I mean, we'll have a recommendation for you of the version you get, but KSP gave it to us as choose one or the other.
Board, open discussion. We all received invite, the Crystal Apple coming up next Thursday, the 21st. I encourage, if you're in town and available to attend, it would be good.
Excellent, excellent. Anything else under the open discussion?
The next Board of Education meeting will take place Monday, December 2nd, at 6:00 here in the meeting room, and we will do a dress rehearsal for our final presentation. And we do have an executive session.
Mr. President, I move we move, go to executive session at 8:50 for the purpose of discussing matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. If this matter were discussed in open session, it might be the privacy of those discussed. Can I say the time? Reconvene at 8:05.
Mark's executive. Any comments? Phone, paper, phones.